Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I am Miguel Del Valle. On behalf of my fellow board members, thank you for coming today. The purpose of this hearing is to comply with the school code provisions regarding the FY 20 amended budget. Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Chicago Sun-Times, a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Chicago, and posted at the Board Room, Principal Office, and 42 West Madison Street Lobby on November 6, 2019. Notice was also posted on the CPSBOE.org website on November 6, 2019. I will now read into the record the public notice as published. Notice: Public hearings FY 20 amended budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, Chicago Board of Education, commonly known as Chicago Public Schools. To whom it may concern: Public notice is hereby given by the Chicago Board of Education that it has prepared an FY 20 amended budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year in tentative form, and that five copies thereof available for public inspection have been filed and are now on file in the office of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, commonly known as Chicago Public Schools, 1 North Dearborn Street, Suite 950, Chicago, Illinois, 60602, and available at www.cps.edu/budget. And that said, Board of Education will hold two public hearings upon said amended budget on the 12th day of November 2019, Chicago Public Schools Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room, Chicago, Illinois, 60602. The first hearing time, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., with the registration of 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the second hearing, Chicago Public Schools Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room, Chicago, Illinois, 60602, with the hearing time 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and the registration taking place from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., dated at Chicago, Illinois, November 6, 2019, Chicago Board of Education, by Miguel Del Valle, President, and attested by the Secretaries de la Gilets Prunes. Mr. President, I would also like to note for the record the members that are present here with us for the first hearing. We have Board Member Rome.
Here.
Vice President Revler.
Here.
Board Member Tress.
Here.
Members Sotelo.
Here.
And President Del Valle.
Here.
We have five members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Joseph Moriarty, our General Counsel, Latonya McDate, our Chief Education Officer, and Arnie Rivera, our Chief Operating Officer. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with the FY 20 amended budget presentation. Heather Wendell, please proceed.
I'll be reviewing the FY 20 amended budget. So we're doing today a budget hearing on the FY 20 amended budget. As you'll recall, we passed an initial budget in August of this year. So our FY 20 original budget, which was approved at the August 28 Board meeting, included 6.2 billion of operating expenses in a total budget of 7.7 billion. This budget included major investments to support districts' continued academic progress through key investments, and all of these investments are still present as part of this amended budget moving forward. There are critical building improvements for more than 300 schools across the city. It was our largest ever capital investment related to pre-K. It was our largest ever expansion of quality academic programming, including IB, STEM, fine and performing arts. There was $10 million to support the first year of the district's multi-year commitment related to nurses, social workers, and case managers. Those positions stand in the amended budget as well. And then $12 million of support for English-language learners at more than 100 schools. This original 20 budget also included assumptions around the contract related to the Chicago Teachers Union and the Service Employees International Union, so the CTU and the SEIU contracts, which were still under negotiation at the time that we passed the original budget in August. We now have tentative agreements with both the CTU and the SEIU, and these five-year, they're five-year agreements, they build on the commitments that we included in the August budget that was passed on the 28th of August. The term of both of these are five-year agreements. There are base compensation increases that are 16 years of cost-of-living adjustment over the five-year of the contract. Again, framing this within the FY 20 budget, there is a 3% increase in FY 20, which is 5% over what was in, or I'm sorry, 0.5% over what was in the original budget. Staffing increases that are part of this five-year contract include 209 additional social workers, one would be assigned at every school, 250 additional nursing positions, one assigned at every school, and 180 additional case managers for 280 by the end of the contract. All three of these were part of what was announced in July, with that initial 2020 investment being part of the August 28 budget commitment. Additionally, by the end of the five-year term, there are 120 equity positions that will be placed in by FY 23 in highest-need schools. There are also English-language learner program teachers, so ELPTs. We're going to lower the threshold on those, and there will be additional teaching positions that will go into schools related to that increment adjustment. Students in temporary living situations will receive full-time community representatives in schools where there are 75 or more, and there are also stipend positions for schools with lower ratios, and we are maintaining at least all of our current clinician staffing levels. So again, that's a view to the five-year commitments within the contract. Other major investments in these tentative agreements include $35 million annually from '21 to '24 to reduce class size through the district, $5 million annually to support sports programming, $5 million annually for veteran teachers. There are also restructured wage scales for CTU and SEIU support staff to help recruit and retain employees, and investments in pipeline and tuition reimbursement programs. Now, the frame of the five-year contract and the assumptions that we baked into the August 28 budget, obviously, we're coming back for an amended budget based on having those tentative agreements. So Slide 3 gave a overview of the five-year commitments in total, but what the budget piece here will vote on and what we're presenting here is specific to the pieces that are in the FY 20 amended budget. And so, as a result of these agreements, we'll be presenting both here at the hearings today and then for approval on the 20th, the items that are related to the amended FY 20 budget. So really, the amended budget includes, on Slide 4 here, several material changes related to the budget that was approved in August. So again, the driver, our primary driver for the amended budget are related to the contract costs. So we have $48 million in additional expenses related to the CTU and SEIU contracts. Again, those are costs to be incurred this year in FY 20. There is a $68 million reduction in expense due to the instructional days during the work stoppage. There are $60 million in reduction revenue lost to the city subsidy to support staff pension costs, so this is related to the MEABF, and there's more discussion on a subsequent slide there. We'll go into a little more detail on these items. $66 million in increased TIF surplus, which is additional revenue above the $97 million that was part of our original August 28 approved budget. And then finally, we anticipate $26 million in reduced short-term borrowing coming in the FY 20. So looking at each of these line items a little bit more closely, the $48 million in increased labor cost is tied mainly to wage increases. So breaking this down by the two tentative agreements, the $33 million of increased expense in the 2020 amended budget related to CTU reflects a $15 million investment for wages and benefits. This is primarily due to the 3% cost-of-living adjustment. Again, as you'll recall, in the August 28 budget, we included a 2.5% wage increase, so the final contract is a 3%, so this is the incremental difference for that. There's $11 million for a restructured wage scale for teaching assistants, nurses, and other support staff, $5 million for substitute teacher incentives for hard-to-staff schools, pipeline initiatives for nurses, social workers, and case managers, and $2 million for additional class size reduction. So again, thinking of the overall frame of the contract, these are investments on the CTU side that go into place this year FY 20. So these are part of the expenses that are being contemplated for the Board meeting on the 20th as part of the amended budget. Similarly, there are cost drivers related to the tentative agreement with SEIU. $15 million of increased expenses in the amended budget reflect the contract commitments there. $2 million is for the incremental cost of the 3% cost-of-living adjustment, so again, above the 2.5% assumption that was in the original budget. And then $13 million for restructured wage scales and stipends for special education classroom assistants, security guards, custodians, and bus aides that are all part of the SEIU. In addition to the contractual pieces that are being presented as part of this amended budget, there are two changes related to budgeting for the support staff pensions. So in FY 20, this will, I'm sorry, the amended FY 20 budget will reflect two different pension pieces. These are to the Municipal Employees Annuity and Benefit Fund, so the MEABF Pension Fund. So the first one is that CPS will reimburse the city for $60 million, which reflects the recent annual payments that the city has made to MEABF on behalf of CPS employees. So this represents within the amended budget a reduction in revenue of $60 million. Also related to the pension, we will, CPS will budget an additional $138 million in offsetting revenue and expense to reflect city's additional payments towards CPS's portion of the MEABF unfunded liability. So the second one is a non-material update that reflects on the budget side what the accounting treatment is of the additional payment made on CPS's behalf. So there's no additional incurred cost there. It's an acknowledgement of the 138, both on the revenue and the expense side within the budget. So the estimated total for FY 20 employee contributions to MEABF for CPS is $198 million. The material update here is the total covered by CPS that was previously covered by the city. That's the $60 million. It's included in the amended budget as a reduction in revenue, which is a material update to the budget. And then the total covered by the City of Chicago, which is the 138, which is included in the amended budget as offsetting revenue and expense, and that's a non-material update. But in total, the $198 million reflects the estimated 2020 employer contribution to MEABF on behalf of, as part of, the about 15,000 CPS employees that are currently part of the MEABF. Slide 8 provides an overall recap and summary of the changes within the amended budget. So again, the difference between the FY 20 budget that was approved on August 28 and the amended budget is, what is reflected here is 144 million of new operating revenues and expenses. So the amended budget totals 7.84 billion, which includes 6.32 billion in operating expenses, which is the, reflects the increase of 144 from the approval in August. So the original FY 20 operating budget was 6.175. The amended budget would be 6.319. You'll see the various changes in expense and revenue, starting at the top with the increase in the CTU costs on the expense side of $33 million, the related SEIU costs of $15 million, the change in the city subsidy for the MEABF of $60 million, the increase in the TIF funding, the decreased expenses related to the days lost to the strike, and then finally, the short-term debt reduction that was mentioned on the previous slide. So those are the material changes that are part of the amended budget. The last section is the non-material change for the accounting treatment. Again, this is a $138 million on the revenue side and a $138 million on the expense side. So those two numbers cancel and net out. For the total operating budget as amended will be the six point, I'm sorry, 6 billion, 6.32 billion. It's big numbers, so pardon me. So 6319 is the final operating budget. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Well, this is a question more of sort of concern. I was at a meeting with the West Side Black elected officials, and obviously, you know, they think of it as a, you know, great, great that we increasing, that's going to be increasing the number of the positions in CPS. But again, I think I echoed this back in August about the who in terms of the process of replenishing, like, black teachers, for instance, because it was such over the years, you know, devastating loss, or just all teachers of color. Latino is also included. And yeah, and it may not be a question that you can answer at this point, but it's just that their concern is about the pipeline in terms of, is there an action plan to go ahead and reach out to, like, the historically black colleges and universities, reach out to our schools, to, you know, about expanding programs, grow your own pipelines, because like I said, for the West Side of Chicago, we have no such thing as a grow-your-own-program. And so, and then also, as we have a pipeline set up for some of the current support staff to maybe move into teaching positions, et cetera, then is there a plan, for instance, like with the safe passage workers who will probably qualify for some of these support staff jobs, to potentially engage them to be part of the pipeline, making sure the community is aware of that, you know, there's going to be some opportunities, however limited opportunities are opportunities, and it seems like we should really work hard to let the community know about these different opportunities, especially those who may have degrees in, like, social work, that how can we assist people in the community to potentially get the proper credentials?
So I can say from the budget perspective, there's a commitment in here for the pipeline programs that, and part of that was part of the FY 20 budget as well. I know that the talent office has, you know, was here present in August when some of the same concerns were raised around making sure that we are casting a wide net and being inclusive in the, in the pipeline and the hiring process. I don't know if there-
And Matt is not, not here, right? But we'll ask Matt to address that question November 20th.
Yeah, because he's not here, but I just want to make sure publicly. I want to share their sentiments.
And he does have a response to that question. It's an important question. I agree. Unless anyone else from staff would like to add, if not, we'll, on November 20th, we'll make sure that-
Yes. Can follow up with that, for sure.
The board member's question is responded to.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Heather, I appreciate this presentation and all the context you've given us previously. I'm still trying to understand this pension fund in addition to all the others.
Sure.
Can you give us a little more context on the MEABF? Who's in it from CPS? Who else is in it? And how have the employer contributions for those other participants been treated before, and how are they being treated going forward?
Sure. So in terms of who is in it within CPS, it is essentially the pension fund with rare exception for everyone who is not in the CTU. So it's largely the folks that are part of the SEIU and then anybody else who is in central office or citywide units that are not part of the CTU. On a broader scale, many of the sister agency units that, again, don't have their own pension fund, the city employees will be part of this pension fund as well. The costs that we are talking about here and that have been, that we both, the ones that we are picking up for ourselves and the ones that are being covered by the city, are specific to the costs associated with the CPS membership within that. So even though there are other city agencies and things, the costs reflected here are specific to that. In terms of how the costs are structured-
Sorry, just to pause you.
Sure.
About how many people is that? How many CPS employees are covered by this pension?
It's about 15,000 in current job titles. And so, in terms of the-
And then there's thousands of other city employees who are also part of this fund.
Correct. And I don't have the number-
Employed by other city agencies.
Yes. And I don't have the number of how many total MEABF participants there are.
Got it.
But can take a note on that. And then in terms of the, I'm sorry, the last part of your question was-
The last part was just how, you explained how the funding, the employer funding for the pension benefit is changing for the CPS employees. I'm wondering, how did employer funding for the non-CPS, the other city employees covered by the fund work before, and how is that changing going forward?
Yes. So that's a great question. The $60 million that the city had previously covered for ours that we now will be picking up, the cost actually pulls us in line with how the other city agencies are treated. So it's a cost that we'll be incurring that aligns us to the approach that's taken elsewhere.
So that the other agencies who are employing these individuals, those agencies' budgets contribute the employer portion?
Correct. My understanding is that, yes, that they have historically been paying for that, and now with this budget, this amended budget, we will be following course of all the other city agencies.
Got it. So this will be an ongoing change?
Correct. We expect it to be an ongoing change.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you, along the same line, review the, again, the $138 million accounting treatment? Because those are not dollars that we actually receive.
Correct. Correct. So the $138 million is the offsetting revenue expense that the city makes towards the portion that is representative of our CPS piece of the unfunded liability in the pension. And so essentially, what happens is the payment is made on our behalf or in kind, essentially is what it is. The funds don't actually come here, but in terms of a acknowledgement of resources that are part of our operating budget overall, accounting treats them as an expense and a revenue that is made in kind or on our behalf. And so, on the budgeting side, we will simply be acknowledging that expense and revenue, again, without any money actually changing hands, but to match the accounting treatment of it, to show that those costs are paid on behalf of our organization.
Is this the first time we do this?
This is the first time that we are seeking this to be part of the explicitly be part, yes.
But from this point on, it will be in our budget every year?
Correct. And the, yes. And one piece is that there, this particular cost experienced some significant growth this year, which is part of the reason to pick it up now in the amended budget, and then going forward, we'd expect it to be-
So even though there's no actual dollars going back and forth, the amount is going to change from year to year?
Potentially, yes. There's been some growth this year, and then just in that, right now, again, it's no, there's no dollars changing hand, there's no additional incurred cost on our part, but the part that is being paid on our behalf has gone up significantly this year. So we're showing that as the expense and revenue here.
Any anticipated growth in the normal costs that we're going to be picking up now, the 60 million within the next few years?
So for now, we are, as part of this, we're authorizing a one-year IGA that will cover the $60 million cost, and so we expect what we have been planning for, as of our understanding currently, is to plan for the $60 million moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Could you just say more about what, why it's 60 that's moving on to the CPS budget and 138 million that's not moving on to the CPS budget, but is sort of an accounting transfer?
Why-
Why those amounts, or what is the significance of 60 million and 138 million?
The $60 million represents essentially what we understand to be the historic level of the subsidy that we've received from the city. So we historically have received the $60 million subsidy from them for this piece of the cost. So with us absorbing it, that's the incurred cost around the, that pension piece. The 138 is the piece that the city would pay on behalf of the unfunded liability. So there's, the difference there is that the unfunded liability is the portion of, that the pension is underfunded essentially. And so that piece is done on behalf of, where the $60 million, again, for every other agency, their version of this, they've been paying it outright. So for us, we're just incurring that cost this year and anticipate to do so moving forward.
Sorry. One more question.
Yeah.
So looking at your summary that you have up right now.
Yep.
You've guided us on the first two lines with the compensation changes and other changes in the collective bargaining agreements, what the first two lines will look like in fiscal '21, '22, and so on. For these other line items, what would you expect to be the amounts in future years?
For?
For the other line items. So the 60 million that's, you expect would be roughly the same in future years? And the increase in TIF funding, is that known? Is that uncertain, or is it something else, and so on for the rest?
So I think what, again, the understanding on the MEABF subsidy, the 60 million loss is that we're doing the one-year IGA with an understanding that we will incur a version of that cost moving forward for each year. And the increase in TIF funding, again, in the August 28 budget, we contemplated the $97 million in TIF funding, the increase that came in this year for the 66. I think it remains, you know, right now, we know that that's what the commitment is for now. The TIF funding and much of this obviously has some interplay with the city and things at this point. So, you know, unless Arnie or others know anything, otherwise, I would think, for now, we know what we're presenting on the 20th, and some of this will be, you know, still up for out-year discussion.
And it would depend on what the city declares to be a TIF surplus.
That's right.
So for future years, that amount is pretty uncertain?
It varies.
I mean, we, we've received a certain amount of TIF funding, obviously, historically, and then we've received the 97 in the August 28 budget, then this 66 here, but I think the understanding is right now that the 66 would not necessarily be present moving forward. But to your point, there's a lot of moving parts with the TIF surpluses, so.
We'll certainly be advocating for as large amount as possible, but we know we received 97 last year, right?
97 in what was approved in the August 28.
And then 97 what we approved, and then we received the extra 60, 66 actually, 60 of which are applied to this pension payment. We would hope that for next year, we would be able to get a similar amount, but that's not guaranteed, because it depends on the, on the size of the TIF surplus, and that's not the Board of Education's decision, that's the city's decision.
Great. Thank you for that.
If there are no other questions?
One more question.
Yes, we have a couple more. Go ahead.
But in terms, I guess, in terms of historical data, is there information that, I guess you can share with us to the public, in terms of the historical amount of TIF surpluses that CPS has received, I guess, you know, past, the past can hopefully be a prediction for the future.
And actually, we did, in the August 28 budget, there was a slide on that. I apologize that I don't know off the top of my head, but definitely, yeah, there's, obviously, there's a public precedent for that, and we can share that.
I think that was the source of the original 97 million.
Yeah. But in terms of just previous years, hoping that-
Yeah. That would be great.
I can respond to the TIF surplus question. Okay. So the last five years, we've received roughly $88 to $97 million each year going back. So we've been, going back to 2016, we've been at that, at that level of 90 to 91.
And I certainly, going back to Santos' question, I certainly would hope that I don't see the decrease expenses due to lost strikes ever again, so I hope that's not a sustainable one. That should be zero.
Santos, you got another question?
Yeah. My last question, just to clarify, this is really helpful as sort of the amendments to the previously passed budget, just trying to get the broader context. The short-term debt reduction here, it means that we're borrowing less, but we are still borrowing. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, and that's borrowing to get through the current fiscal year for less than one-year terms?
Borrowing to get through the fiscal year for, what was the second part?
For, for less than one-year terms, but it is, we're still borrowing-
Correct.
-to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
But could you elaborate on that? Why didn't we build this amount in, into the August budget that we approved? What has changed that allowed us to increase, to add another amount to the, to the savings in short-term borrowing costs?
So essentially, on the revenue and expense columns here, you know, we are passing and presenting a balanced budget, and so as part of the changes related to both the work stoppage and then the contract costs, also with the TIF surplus and the subsidy happening, the remaining $26 million allows us the opportunity in this amended budget to utilize that to essentially borrow $26 million less for this year. In August, the financial picture was slightly different around the assumptions for the contract and things, and so that budget was balanced in August based on those known assumptions. Here, with the contract piece and the other ins and outs, we have the opportunity to take the 26 million and use that in a way that wasn't present in the August budget.
And we have, again, before us, a balanced budget.
I'm sorry?
We have a balanced budget.
We have a balanced budget, yes.
I mean, so the way I understood the- I mean, so the way I understood the first budget we approved, we were basically balancing it with our ability to take on debt, right? And now, we're basically reducing that portion, given where we are, right?
Okay. There are no other questions or comments? We'll, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Heather, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with today's public comment segment. Roberta Salas?
Mr. President, please proceed.
Yes.
I just want to leave the public comment directions into the record.
Please do.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the first FY '20 amended budget public hearing was held between the hours of 3:00 PM and 4:00 PM. Individuals who registered to speak will have two minutes to comment, and I will call the speakers in the order of registration. This hearing will conclude after the last person who has signed in to speak has spoken or at 6:00 PM, whichever occurs first. When called, please state your name, and I will proceed by calling the first speaker. And as you referenced, Mr. President, we only have one speaker who registered, and we have Roberta Salas, please.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Roberta Salas. I'm a parent rep on the LSC at Murphy Elementary. I'm also a parent of a student at Amundson High School. For full disclosure, I'm also on board of an organization called Raise Your Hand, so I'm a public school advocate. The reason that I'm here really is to make a come. First of all, I want to thank you for making the initial, additional investment in our public schools, and I know that you've made an agreement on the makeup days, that you've come to an agreement where you're kind of splitting the difference on the makeup days. And I just have two requests on that. One is that you hold the schools harmless on the school quality rating for attendance on those days, because, as you know, probably there's going to be a lot of missing students on those days, and I ask that they become excused absences for students that will not be there on those days. I don't really have an issue with the days that you've chosen. I know that you've had to be very thoughtful about what they are, but as school representatives, we're concerned about how it's going to affect our, our rating because of the attendance percentage that's required on the quality rating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salas.
We will have the makeup days on the agenda for the November 20th meeting, and so there'll be more information, discussion on that. For today, we're dealing with the amended budget, but I thank you for your, for your comments on, on the makeup days.
So, Mr. President, this concludes the public comment segment.
Okay. That's it. All right. Well, board members, any more comments or questions regarding the amended budget? If not, this concludes the first FY '20 amended budget hearing.